This natural disgrace to white boy the legacy of hundreds of students in this school district depending to some anti-racism theory that he stole this land from Native Americans and committed his own causes, according to who? All of a sudden we have the absolute proof that Columbus came, made it to the Americas and caused mass destruction and devastation to the people who were there, and who was there before them? Did you miss out on the history books that claim that wars and corps occurred between the tribes themselves? That there were no issues to scout men and women, or even kill poles and tribes, or even the drug dealers of this country? But someone came along with a theory to remove Christopher Columbus from history books that present as an evil man who came to plenty's lands and decimated anyone that didn't look like him. But the fact is, he was looking for goods that the Far East had to offer to the rest of the world and trying to find a shortcut to trade for those goods. I'm sure we fully expected to see people that didn't look like him or even speak this language. People have literally died coming to this country for not opportunity, and that includes all racists. But to want to make sure that any white reference is completely avoided in the bulk of this school district. If Christopher Columbus was black, would you do the same? If he was from the Middle East or Asian, would you do the same? Or is that considered racist? But it's not racist in these countries in Europe, right? You leave a legacy for its children to be ashamed of, including white, especially those with Italian or Spanish heritage, and even Asian, for they come here and answer the bountiful goods that suffered, served, other parts of the world, so much for diversity, equity, and inclusion. I don't see anybody packing their houses here and leaving to go back to their mother towns and leaving your long lives for the Native Americans. And I'm sure the bulk of you have no idea where you really came from, or even can speak the mother tongue of those poor guys. But to prick the white out any continent made by a white man is ridiculous. George Orwell's 1984 has now come to fruition at the Wachusett School District. Who knew what perfection would become the transfer for some old school board to better? Thank you.
Good job.
Jimmy, we need to put her through first to take hold of it. I'm here to add the reinstatement of Columbus Day on the district calendar. Now, last week, the Diversity Equity and Anti-Racism Subcommittee met, and it was on their agenda to discuss this. And after some conversation, one member made the common sense motion to just align the district calendar with the Department of Education's calendar and put Christopher Columbus back in. The motion in the past, you know why? No one would second it. So, we're stuck with that. Now, also at this meeting, there was a group of people from the community, mostly parents, and we outnumbered the Subcommittee members by two to one, by the way. And the parents were there because of the passage of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion policy at the previous district meeting. And it is kind of shocking that the motion passed, the DEI policy remains, because three quarters of the emails that were received by this committee were against it. And I just feel like the committee is not listening. This school district is eighty-five percent white, and this policy basically implies that all these kids are racist, white supremacists, homophobic. What effect does this have on our students? Well, we know that because of the panoramas survey that John Holt, possibly the hardest working person in the administration of the Francisco Super Pantera, he showed us the results of this test, which clearly show that by high school, kids that feel a sense of belonging, respected, that they count, right, are in the bottom percentile in the state. These kids are feeling demoralized. And the Christopher Columbus Day issue is just a sort of metaphor for the destruction of our culture and the shaming of people who are white. So, I ask you, please, consider just this little teeny positive action for our students to just reinstate Columbus Day, do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I would, I think it's kind of strange that I see four members up there, no faces. There's everyone, if you're not gonna come to the, if you don't want to come to the meetings, then don't run for office in the first place. If you do get elected, it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this committee, and not having your face on there to actually see the people in attendance is a disservice and very disrespectful to the people in the community who elected you. But, last time I was here to observe as both a parent and a taxpayer, and an award-winning journalist about the upcoming DEI situation that we have being pushed on us in this district. It has been used in other districts to eliminate advanced placement testing, like in Boston, it is not as it appears to be, and people had some very good arguments against it. I didn't even plan on speaking at that meeting. I just sat over right there and attempted to record it. Some of you might have seen that. I'm legally allowed to record it because the First Amendment affords us that right to do so. And while I was doing that, four members of some sort of Wachusett Area Social Justice Alliance, multiple members of which have spouses on this committee, came over to me like masked thugs, stood in front of me, and intimidated me into recording and being at this meeting. It's one of the only meetings I've ever been to. Talk about inclusion? I didn't feel very included when that happened to me. I felt unwelcomed here. As a matter of fact, they told me to go back to where I came from, that I don't live in Holden. I assure you that I do. I was literally told to go back where I came from. That does not sound inclusive, that does not sound equitable. And this committee did nothing. No one told them to sit down, no one told them they were wrong, no one admonished them for their disgusting, anti-first amendment censorious behavior. It's embarrassing. So, I think it's kind of ironic that they want to push DEI and focus on that in schools when we should be focusing on civics, and we saw it happen right in front of us. We had four adults who don't understand how the First Amendment works. There's twenty-seven amendments, it's the first one. They don't even know how it works. Unacceptable for that to happen. So, I thought that was the perfect encapsulation of everything that is wrong with this movement. Also with Columbus Day, we are literally trying to erase history to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which erases Italian heritage in this country. And what we're, what I saw also in the agenda tonight, one of the only members of this committee, of this group, that actually stands counter to what is acceptable, and that actually stood up for me, the only one who stood up for me, Matt Lavoy. You're trying to censure him, you're trying to punish him tonight for actually standing up for what is right and for members of the community. We'll just know that we're not going to take it anymore. And I would, I would expect an apology and a resignation from everyone that, and I would like this board to condemn what those four members did. Thank you.
Paul, I'm here to chair the very closing remarks. I would keep taking you tonight. First, according to dates, the budget for close budget will be available on February 23rd. For our budget policy, it will be in the finance. We discussed the budget with the towns and with the town officials on February 27th. And now, here in the meeting tonight, it's open to the full committee and to public. March 2nd is our public hearing. This is a special meeting of the full committee. On Monday, March 6th, we will vote on the budget. Please mark your calendars and report to the meeting as we must have form for these meetings. Secondly, I just want to remind everyone of our rules for the meeting and the assembly. If you have a point of order, please write it up on the floor.
That was fun. So there you go, civics lesson, folks. Town government works, that's how you do it right there. Anyway, what are people saying? So yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna, I mean, they're gonna get your shit, you saw that. Note, where's Assama Silva, the woman that beat me there? She has, I don't think she's come to a single meeting, not a single one, called them out on that. If you're not gonna, like, why would you want to get elected to a committee and then not show up to meetings all the time? You saw it on the boards, like, they're like avatars and shit. At least show your face. Jesus Christ, it's embarrassing. But, anyway, apparently there's no light out here. Hopefully that went well, did you guys like it? What do people say? I'm just reading the comments. You're right, David, she never attends. Okay. I didn't have anything pre-written. I feel like when it's pre-written, it just doesn't sound the same, so I just go off on a tangent, you know? Start talking about Columbus Day and shit. That's actually the big thing on Columbus Day. They're getting rid of Columba, they got rid of ample though, of the DEI bullshit, like, we're erasing history to focus on things that make people feel good. That's all it comes down to. And we're also doing so, you're erasing other people, you're not making them feel included, like, that's the Italian day, right? Irish people, of their heritage, they get St. Patrick's Day. Black people, they get the whole month of February, right? The gays get June. Italians have one freaking day, right? That's it. Columbus Day. They're being erased. Now, I don't really care for Italians that much, but still, like, sometimes you just have to be the bigger man in Stanford principle, you know what I mean? But, anyway, what else are people saying? Are they expected or required to respond to your answers? No, they're not. So, they're not gonna respond, it's just, I go there to be heard. Not, not a single one, only one of them replied to my email, and he said, "I have no comment because your lawyer sent us a letter." So Mark Rendaza sent them a letter last time, so. Anyway. It's like, yeah, it's like, you, you, people resonate with them, or like, you know, change their mind. You still gotta, it's like, that's how they're, that's how it works, man. And the important part is you let them know that you exist, that you're there, that even though you know that you're outnumbered, you're not gonna shut up, you're not gonna stop talking, you know? Because that's what they expect you to do, is just get bullied. Like, I show up to a freaking, they're so, they're the only people that go to this shit, and then we start showing up, and what happens? The Mask Mafia, the Grandma Mafia, starts coming after me. Hold on. Freaking cold. Goddamn. Actually, I could put it right up here, can't I? And dry it? The wall, the Great Wall of Grandma. Alright, what are people saying? What are the comments? Trying to read these. Buffering? Hopefully not too bad. What's with the film in portrait mode? I know! I always forget! But it's like, when I go on the phone, it's, I don't understand, like, hell, I don't know, I gotta experiment with that whole thing. Put the cocaine, do I have any cocaine out? I do have a runny nose, excuse me, but, think I'm good now. Alright, anyway, anyone else have any questions or anything? You still need to speak, these, exactly, these wankers never apologize. No sound on Holden Live? Yeah, that's the other thing, it's like, it's a good, they did ask at the beginning, is anyone planning on taping? It's like, I don't really have to say, like, what if I came late? You know, then I can start taping whenever I want. So. Anyway, I'm gonna kill at the hearing, yeah, we'll see. Wait, what hearing? Have a hearing? Oh, thanks, I'm who, I appreciate that. Gindy lawns need love, unc, we Irish are loved by men, yeah, you goddamn right. I get messages from people saying that, I guess they're broadcasting on this, you know, like, they have to broadcast it, but there's no sound. It's like, so it's a good thing I'm there, it's a good thing I'm there, there'd be no friggin' record of this shit. You know? Oh, does Lauren think I'm about to speak? No, I already spoke. I already spoke, dear. How do you know if they apologize? Oh, they're not going, I know they're not gonna apologize. Like, if they did say anything, it would be like at the very end, but I'm not sitting through all that. You know? It's a good point, US is so here, why not just start your own, like, the indigenous peoples, like, first of all, you got the casinos, that's a pretty good deal. But, you know, wouldn't you want your own holiday? Why are you trying to usurp Columbus Day? Aren't you going to another school board meeting? This was the meeting, Lauren, I just left the meeting, I went to the meeting. You're watching, you're watching it. Anyone else have any questions? Alright, yeah, I'll be at Bill Ricka, this is my school committee tour, I'll be in Bill Ricka on Monday. Oh, that's gonna be passionate, that's like the Monica Cannon Grant one. I have a lot to say about that. I mean, that's, well, that's where we're going next, like, that's the kind of shit. The diversity, that's why diversity, equity, and inclusion is cancer, because it brings in people like Monica Cannon Grant, because they are the DEI salespeople, you know? I got another, I got another blog coming up and working on, for a few hours today, I gotta come in, about some DEI situation going on in Wayland. I don't know if you guys have seen this shit going on out there, it's pretty crazy, but got a thing on that. Nah, so stay tuned tonight, I'll have that up. You don't like Italian subs? It's okay, I like Italian subs. Just the women are a little crazy, that's all, it's no big deal. Basically, the concept is, as you did, difference is you just go live, yeah, I know, yeah, so I gotta work on that, CMG, I gotta work on that. So like, when I start it, like, when I, when I create it, does it have to be, do I have to hold it sideways when I create it? I'm not sure. We'll see. They're like Latina, like, yeah, I mean, they're good cooks, don't get me wrong. They're just, they just talk a lot, that's all. Okay, anybody else? Fax the women. Um, no, I don't want to be racist to Italians, don't, they're, they're better than the Portuguese, let's all agree on that at least, okay? No offense to the Portuguese, but kind of offense. Alright, anyway, guys, uh, yeah, what does it say? "It appears about 4:30 PM someone may have committed suicide by trains in the same spot, Mitch Michaels?" Oh, that's not good. Well, I'll tell you, it's the trains in this country right now, they're crashing into each other and causing major environmental catastrophes, but it's all good, baby, because it's gay as shit, that's all that mattered. And that's a perfect example of DEI. You know why freaking countries falling apart right now? Why there's train crashes and chemical spills going on and environmental disasters? Because our Department of Transportation Secretary asshole is the walking example of everything that's wrong with diversity, equity, and inclusion. Like, oh yeah, like, sure, planes don't ever go from point A to point B, and trains crash and cause environmental disasters, but dude, he sucks dick, so, it's frig- Give it up! Give it up for the equity! Yeah! Good job, Mayor Pete, took it like a champ! Okay, anybody else? I'm not part Italian, I'm zero part Italian, I would not. I don't, I'm Irish, I don't really like, I don't like the Irish either, so, I don't, I, I like Americans, to be perfectly honest with you. They're my favorite. I don't, I mean, my, you know how I'd feel about the Irish, like, I went out and irish demon about that, it's like, my ancestors left your country, so that I didn't have to be Irish, that was the whole point. I never understood that with these people, like, they're all, my, my heritage, it's like, dude, your ancestors fled that shit, like, that's mad disrespectful, isn't that like the biggest form of disrespect to the homeland? Is your ancestors left it? And we're like, I'm getting the fuck out of here, it's horrible, I want my kids to live somewhere else. I don't, I never understood that, never understood that. Gonna start, I have nothing against the English, I actually have respect for the English, because our country was, our government was created by the English, right? Essentially, like, we copied England, except for the king part, but as far as the, like, how the government functions and shit, and like, how a civilized society is supposed to work, like, the English, they're the best, they're, they're the bomb, everybody likes England. We spoke, we copied their language, we just made the accent better, that's all. Okay. You're right, it's all, none of it's about equity, it's all about whining and control, you're goddamn right. Irish demon fucks potatoes, there we go, no doubt about that. Anybody else? The Greeks? Ah, God. Oh, he, first of all, your pizza sucks. The Italians have good pizza at least. And, I don't know, why, like, why, why do you make, I don't get the pizza, I don't get it. The music sucks. Nice beaches, I guess, that one city there with all the eyes and all the vowels, that seems nice. But, uh, yeah, other than that, not a fan. I mean, it was good like 2,000 years ago, but, um... Just butchered the language. Uh, "The potato famine nearly killed us all"? Yeah, that's why we got the fuck out, they're a country that doesn't have potato famines. "I saw Chris Stapleton last summer", yeah, you were, he was in Winnipeg when I was there. Do you like how they sang the Black National Anthem at the Super Bowl? I didn't even notice it, I was drinking, I didn't notice it. Said, "No, I didn't, I didn't watch any, I didn't see any of that, I heard about it afterwards." I'm like, yeah, figures. More, more bullshit, more divisive, diverse, they should call it divisive equity and inclusion, except, no, we'll just rename the other two. Needs divisive something, we'll come up with something. Divisive erasure of inclusivity. And I'll tell you one thing, and I agreed with this, that, um, what's his name was saying today? I'll just drive, fuck it, actually, let me keep it on right there. I think that, um, Matt, what's his name said that? Mark Bertrand said this today, and I agree with it. Matt Jones could make the Super Bowl with the Eagles. I, I feel that way, like, after watch, I didn't watch much of the Eagles this year. I like, no disrespect to Jalen Hurts, he's a good quarterback, I like him. I don't think he's anything special, like, obviously Patrick Mahomes is special, but I think Matt Jones, if Jalen Hurts was good enough to make the Super Bowl with that team, then Matt Jones definitely good enough to make the Super Bowl with that team, because that's the best offensive line I've ever seen, like, the Kelsey brother up front. The, the push that they got on that offensive line, they could do whatever the fuck they wanted to do. And Jalen Hurts has so much time, all the time, holes open up everywhere, and that's a defensive front with, you know, a pretty good defensive front for Kansas City. So I really feel that way. And, and, man, first of all, I won a lot of money, so that was really good. I don't really gamble much, but I, I can't wait till gambling comes to the state in a couple weeks. I had to drive to Connecticut, sit in my car like a degenerate, I, I went to Webster Lake, and there's some road there that you can just drive into, you head to Connecticut, and first, I, I came across some mini mart and just sat in the parking lot for ninety minutes, made all my bets. Dude, I made some good ones, I posted them on the thing, like, I, I don't like doing the, I, I like doing long shots, you know, make it worthwhile, I don't like, like, I would never bet on a quarterback for MVP because it's like a fifty-fifty thing, I don't like those bets, I like the long shot, so. I took, uh, the bet, I got a two dollar bet on, I said that Jalen Hurts is gonna score the first touchdown, and then Travis Kelsey's gonna score the second touchdown. Two dollars to win a hundred, it happens. And I'm like, those are the two most likely guys to score, for like, according to the odds, those are two more, I'm like, why wouldn't I just take them in order? I did, I gotta be honest, I cheated, I took it the reverse way too, I took Kelsey and then Hurts in case they got the ball first. But I took that, but that was an awesome bet, it was brilliant. Like, all these crazy bets, I mean, I'd have to go and look at them again, there's winning bets left and right there. Oh, I bet the, the first quarter scores, do that one next year. Bet, there's only so many possible scores that can happen in the first quarter, like what? Seven-seven, seven-three, seven-zero, ten-seven, maybe fourteen-seven, maybe fourteen-ten? There's like ten scores that can happen. So bet on those, because they give you really good odds. I, I took seven-seven, and boom, it hits, it was ten to one. I'll take it, I'll take it. So that was a good one. I did, oh, man, if I was so close to, I thought I was gonna get thirty-one, twenty-seven. So, I bet that, I took a bunch of final scores, I took like five different final scores, because those are the ones that pay out like, bet three bucks, win five hundred dollars kind of thing. So, I bet some exact scores, and one of the exact scores I picked was Chiefs thirty-one, I took Chiefs thirty-one, Eagles twenty-seven, and I took Chiefs twenty-eight, Eagles twenty-seven. At one point, it was twenty-eight, twenty-seven, and then the Chiefs got the ball, and I'm like, oh shit, if they get a field goal here, I'm thirty-one to twenty-seven, shit, I'm gonna win it. I look, I look at my sheet, how much is it? I bet three hu, three bucks to win six-oh-three. I was gonna, I'm like, oh, give me a field goal right here, give me a field goal, they scored a touchdown, those assholes. So I didn't win it, but that's cool, it's like three dollars, what do I care? It's like, to win six-hundred, that's good, you're gonna win that eventually, you know? If you do that enough times, you're gonna win that. But, yeah. I'm gonna be home in like three minutes, I'll be able to read this, these comments if you guys have it, and you can fire away, home. But, you got, how'd the performance go today? I was, you know, when I speak off the cuff like that, I have some key talking points that I need to get to, mindful that I have exactly three minutes, and, next time we'll do something crazier. Next time we'll do something like, really send the message to these people, really send it to them. They are trying to censure, there's like the one guy on the school committee, his name was Matt Lavoy, he's from Rutland, he's like a pain in their ass, he's great. He is against all this diversity, equity, and inclusion nonsense, like, he's a, he's the one, he voted to open the schools first, was against the masking, he's like the parents' guy. And they're trying to censure him now, whatever that means, it's like a stern condemnation of him, it's like, you're gonna censure this guy? Come on. For what? I know exactly why they're censuring him. He was the only one that stood up for me. A couple others did afterwards, and I appreciate that. But like during the meeting, he actually asked the cops to have them removed. So, man, we'll see, we'll see. It's funny, they know who I am now, I don't even have to say who I am, they just know who I am. So that's fine, they just need to know that I'm, I'm the guy that's gonna be a pain in their ass moving forward, and you might win, and you might get elected, but I'm gonna make it difficult for you. Like, I'm gonna beat, and that's an important part of democracy, that's what the minority party has to do. Eventually, your day will come where you're gonna win an election, right? But it's not gonna happen ever if you're not active. So we've got, like, in town, we've got this like kind of little counterculture thing going on here, parent group forming, couple, we've gotten a couple people elected to the school committee, there's twenty-two spots on it, I think we, we got four, that's, that's better than zero. So we're working on it, you know? We're working on it, it's about finding shit out, like, who pays attention to town government? So there's five towns in our district, and I'm like, well, Sterling has two spots open next year, and then Rutland has a spot open next year, so we need, like, Donald Trump won Sterling, Donald Trump won Rutland, we should be winning those seats, like, we should take those towns back. Princeton blows, Princeton's got, is in Paxton, they're too liberal, they only have, they're the smallest towns, they only have two people, two members, Rutland and Sterling are four, and Holden has ten, we're the big city. But, uh, you know, we're not as conservative as Sterling and Rutland, so it's like, you just gotta take those seats, like, there should be eight conservative seats, and that's what you gotta do, it's grassroots shit. Get out there, get active, because that's what they do. They have to control everything, they have to control where the friggin' dog catcher is. They have to run every aspect of your life. They have to, they're just control freaks, that's all these people are at the end of the day, I don't give a, somebody said that earlier, it's like, they don't care about diversity, equity, they just care about power and control, that's literally all they want. They want you to be, they want to be able to force you to say and believe everything that they say and believe. And they want to force it on your kids. And that's why they want it in the schools, they want the, like, you wanna go and, and teach this bullshit to your kids? Have at it, they're your kids, they're your problem, not mine. But my kids go to the schools too, and you don't have a right to force that on them. Sorry, sorry. See, yeah, that, that's it. Yeah, we're pulling in, so I'll be able to read the non-super chats in a minute. It's too bad we don't have super chats, I don't know, that'd be cool, one of these days. We don't need it though, we got turtle, turtle chat, don't we, folks? I'm going on another show on Thursday, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon. You guys know Chrissy Mayer is? She's a comedian, and she's been following this Eliza Blue shit a lot too, so she's having me on, she invited me on our producer day today, so I'll be on there Thursday at... Whatever. Alright, let me read these questions before they move. Alright, any other questions you guys have? Yeah, Massachusetts is an all blue, you got that right. No, I mean, we exist, we're a distinct minority, I know that, like, Jeff Teal's not gonna win governor, but, it's turtle, they knew last, this is turtle boy. Yeah, go back to where you came from. But, oh, Bill Ricka's gonna be even better, when I speak at Bill Ricka next Monday, get ready for that, because that's like Monica Cannon Grant. Hit two forty on a ten dollar squared, nice job. It was, it was the main numbers that won. I mean, eight and five was a weird one to win, but the rest of them were standard, four and four, one at halftime, seven-seven in the first quarter, I think third quarter was... I think third quarter was four-one, I wanna say? Was it four-one? I think, but. Alright, any other questions? I'm just reading the comments here. Did you see Shane's ridiculous comment in here? Or on Twitter? Because I responded to his bullshit on Twitter. Dude, that dude is such a tool. I didn't, I didn't know much about it, he followed me on Twitter, I didn't know who he was. So, I instantly have a little respect for you, because you're interested in me. But then, he's such a tool. But, yeah. What's up? I'm just finishing up my live real quick. Why, what's up? I'll be right up, anyway, I gotta go, I gotta go. Alright, I'll, we'll talk to you guys, uh, on, uh, Thursday night, no, Tuesday night, tomorrow night, for the live show, nine o'clock, peace, guys.